Good evening, I'm calling this meeting to order. The time is 5:30 PM. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, this meeting is officially open with the quorum present. Please join us as we stand and we will begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
At this time Clint Bond from Communications Department will introduce our first set of recognitions.
Thank you President Ramos, members of the board and Dr. Scribner. Annually, we recognize our students who qualify to compete at the national level in career and technical student organization competitions. Students, would you please stand as I call your names and your advisors as well? And ladies and gentlemen, let's applaud each school by event. The following Pascal High School Future Business Leaders of America members will compete at the National Conference this summer in San Antonio. Having qualified with a first place is Joseph Lee Insurance and Risk Management; third place, Taha Sharaf Securities and Investments; third place, Daniel O, Agribusiness; third place, Ian Travis Cyber Security. Pascal High School student Chasten Musenda, freshman, was elected as the Texas Area 7 Vice President of FBLA. And chapter advisor Pascal CTE teacher Alfredo Martinez Reyes was elected to the FBLA State Board as the representative for Area 7. Other advisors include Corey Griffin and Thomas Kiesel. So let's acknowledge them, please. Still in the Future Business Leaders of America category, we move on to South Hills High School where Stephanie Trevino qualified to compete in San Antonio in the Mobile Application Development category. Advisors are Julie Fisher, Salida Thomas, and Tracy Gillespie. Moving on to the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, the following Trimble Tech students qualified to further compete at the upcoming National Conference in Anaheim. First place team is Maria Hernandez, Orlando Hernandez Palacios, and Miriam Perez Vega in Applied Math for Culinary Management Occupational. All of these students also received a $4,000 Texas Tech Scholarship for four years and a one-year $5,000 Scholarship to Auguste Scafier School of Culinary Arts. Advisors are Natasha Bruton and Heather Kurima. In the Skills USA competition, Southwest High School student Yamalet Xavier placed first and qualified for national competition in Louisville in the T-shirt design category. Advisors at Southwest are Darcy McCready and Sean Hatt. South Hills High School Texas Association of Future Educators members who qualified for the National Educators Rising Conference in Dallas include top-five finisher Martha Wilson, educator rising moment, educator rising leadership and ethical dilemma; top-five finisher Destiny Apodaca, ethical dilemma; top-five finisher Melissa Areola, career research, non-core teaching, and she's also the TAFE State Vice President for 2018 and 19; top-five finisher Daniel Aguirre, ethical dilemma; top-five finisher Ulisa Osado, ethical dilemma; and chapter advisors are Victoria Jensen and Erica Davis. From the Texas Academy of Biomedical Sciences, the following Health Occupational Students of America members will be moving on to Orlando for international competition. They placed with second place Anna Barnes, Behavioral Health; second place Leila Khan, Photography; top 10% Selmait Gebrik... Let me get this right, Gebrik Kita, I hope I got that right, in healthcare issues; top 10% Maureen Seawarra, healthcare issues; top 10% Aiden Mutia, healthcare issues; top 10% Mark Attarkey, healthcare issues; top 10% Alyssa Zavala, healthcare issues; top 10% Whitney Dingman, healthcare issues. Chapter advisors are Yvette Mumford, Naomi Powell, Sarah Wally, and Lynn Gaylor. Lastly, from the Young Women's Leadership Academy, the following students competed in First Tech Challenges First Championship Robotics in April. Sandra Viagraña, Eunice Cardona, Diana Cardona, Angelica Conchola, Diana Duran, Amia Green, Jocelyn Mendez, Brianna Navarro, Selena Morales, Penelope Huff, Priscilla Trejo, Damarius Cardona, and chapter advisors are Sergio Flores and Marsha Bean. And parents or family members of any of these great students, would you please stand or raise a hand so we could recognize you as well? And the Executive Director of our CTE program is Daphne Ricard. Thank you very much. Next, Ken Ross and Lisa Early from Lockheed Martin will say a few words regarding that company's internship program.
President Ramos and Dr. Scribner, board members, thank you very much for letting us come here today and share some good news. At Lockheed Martin, we're always looking for great engineers, and we start looking early through our involvement with our local schools. Through our partnership with Fort Worth ISD, we have engineers and mentors engaged in the classroom throughout the district, whether it's our Engineers in the Classroom Program, First Robotics Mentors, or hosting field trips out to our plant. Another partnership we share is with Project Lead the Way, a problem-solving-based curriculum that focuses a lot on engineering that is expanding throughout the district. Project Lead the Way is also a foundational element of our high school internship program. I'd like to let Lisa Early tell a little bit more about that.
Good evening. In the 2018-2019 school year, Lockheed Martin hired eight Fort Worth ISD Project Lead the Way seniors for an internship. For this next coming up academic year, we will hire an additional eight seniors to begin their internships. The goal of our program is to connect students' classroom experiences to real engineering work. And when I mean "real engineering work," I mean these folks get to work on projects directly related to the production of the world's most advanced fighter jets. When these seniors finish their high school internships, our objective is to have them to return as college interns each summer while pursuing their STEM degrees, then become Lockheed Martin engineers upon graduation. We are excited to see how this partnership between Lockheed Martin, Fort Worth ISD, and Project Lead the Way continues to grow as we look forward to hiring those Fort Worth grown engineers. Thanks.
In the 2018-2019 school year, Project Lead the Way students at Benbrook Middle High School, Western Hills High School, Young Men's Leadership Academy, and Young Women's Leadership Academy were hired as interns. Those students are now graduated and will continue their education with the assistance of Lockheed Martin scholarships to each intern to continue their education in a STEM field. Students, please come forward to receive your scholarship as I call your name. From Western Hills High School, we have Leslie Ariza, and that's it. From the Young Men's Leadership Academy, it's Matthew Burgos, but he's not with us this evening. He's at Frog Camp at TCU this evening. From Young Women's Leadership Academy, Yasmin Castaneda, Mia Flores, and Leslie Sierra. Academy, and Young Women's Leadership Academy will join Lockheed Martin as interns. Students, please stand to be recognized when your name is called, and we'll congratulate them all together. From Benbrook Middle High School, Grace Desmond; from Young Men's Leadership Academy, Mason Dennefield and Davian Harper; and from Young Women's Leadership Academy, Angelica Conchola, Diana Conchola, Claudia Diaz, Amia Green, and Jocelyn Mendez. And if we could have them all come down for a quick photo with the Lockheed representatives, please. Thank you, Mr. Bond, and congratulations to all the students recognized here this evening. Comments, Trustee Robbins?
Thank you, President Ramos. We are so proud of you all, and the advantage that you are going to get by being these interns is just incredible. In many cases, when you go off to college, you're going to have experiences that your professors have not had. So this will truly put you in great standing among your peers and among everyone, and I'm convinced that at some point down the road, you all are going to be running the corporation. So we're very proud of you and congratulate you.
Trustee Jackson.
Thank you, President Ramos. Tonight on our consent agenda, we will be honoring a man that was a faculty member for a good deal of time in Fort Worth ISD. He happened to also be at Eastern Hills High School when I was there. Of course, he came there the last year I was there, so he's extremely young. Charles E. Watts, Sr., who is on the front row, right by the front door, came to Eastern Hills High School in the fall of 1973 from IM Terrell High School. He brought a new energy into every genre of band which he taught, and he taught like no other. He was the cool guy, he had the cool hair, the cool suit, and he also had all the cool kids in the band. So there were no band nerds when Mr. Watts was there. Eastern Hills Marching Symphonic and Stage Band remained the band within the region that set the benchmarks for other schools to compete against. He built a very strong desire for students to continue music studies and was not just a teacher, but a mentor, motivator, and a great friend. Many of his students went on to teach music within Fort Worth ISD. In a 10-year span of competitions, Mr. Watts bands won 17 contests from Corpus Christi to Amarillo and even in Enid, Oklahoma, at a seven-state nationally acclaimed contest. Eastern Hills under Mr. Watts won first place for 10 consecutive years at Texas Tech University Band Competition. The faculty, staff, and community have requested that we name the band hall after Mr. Watts, and we're proud to do so tonight. Let's give him a round of applause. Mr. Watts, would you like to say a few words?
I would just put it like this, I was just nuts about Eastern Hills High School. And I had such wonderful kids. I know a lot of people say, "Well, you know, the kids are not like they used to be," or like they whatever. But boy, I tell you, I had the greatest kids. And one thing that I didn't tell you just then, and I'll have to say this, and this is not a brag, this is just something that I'm so proud of, but in '89, we were the best jazz band in the state of Texas, high schools, and won third place in the national, competing against the United States. So I just had to tell you that because that's something that just knocked me out. And I was just proud to be able to do something like that. And I thank y'all for inviting me out here, and boy, that name on the hall at our Eastern Hills is something really great for me, you know? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Trustee Jackson, for that. And Mr. Watts, congratulations as we penned that in our vote and consent agenda. At this time, we're going to take a brief five-minute break so that our guests may depart if they so choose. If not, you're more than welcome to stick around for a budget presentation. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Three, Reports and Presentations. Mrs. Shiro, are you ready to give your report?
Yes, sir. Yes, President Ramos, Dr. Scribner, and members of the board. This evening, Mr. Johnson and I will be presenting the 2019-2020 Budget Update. We both feel it's important to spend some time on House Bill 3. It has been said to be the most significant change in school legislation, finance legislation in over 40 years, and so it's going to take a little time for that bill to be reviewed and for us to know with certainty what exactly it says and how much of the allocation we'll be receiving. And as of today, the bill has not been signed by the governor, but we anticipate that it will be and that it will be effective 9/1. So this is our agenda for this evening, and we'll be going over these topics in the next few minutes. I think the most significant change in HB3 is the increase in the basic allotment. The district is being raised from $5,000, $5,140 per student in average daily attendance to $6,160. However, there are many other sections within HB3 that have not been fully defined, somewhat ambiguous, and subject to interpretation. And you can see some of that in this slide. When you look at the Legislative Budget Board, they've calculated the increase to Fort Worth of approximately $61.4 million. Mo Casey, who is one of the most respected, if not the most respected, firm in school finance, has estimated our gain to be approximately $47.6 million, while Mr. Johnson and I have used a new template that we utilize for the calculation of state aid, and basically, we have come up with about $53.5 million. So the reasons for these differences will be more fully explained later in the presentation. Another important change in HB3 is the reduction in the maintenance and operations tax rate. As you'll see, it's also called the compressed tax rate, and currently, our M&amp;O compressed tax rate is a dollar with six cents added as our enrichment pennies. Under the new law, the compressed tax rate has been reduced by seven cents to 93 cents while still maintaining our six cents of enrichment pennies. Of course, our debt tax rate, also known as our interest in sinking tax rate, has not changed. It's remaining at $29.2 cents per $100 evaluation. So there's an overall decrease in our tax rate from $135.2 to $128.2 in this coming school year. The current law used to say that we had six golden pennies. HB3 allows now for two additional, so if we do another TRE, we could apply for at least two additional pennies that would be golden and get additional state aid. This is just an example of the reduction in our property tax collections in the 2019-2020 school year, using our assessed property tax base of $38.7 billion. If in fact, we were using our current M&amp;O tax rate of $1.06, we would have collected $410.6 million in local tax collections. Now that it's being reduced to 99 cents, our M&amp;O tax collections will be reduced by almost $27 million to $383.5 million. Again, let's now look at the compensation allotment outlined in HB3. The new law says, "In any school year where the basic allotment is increased over the prior year, that a district must use 30% of the gain in revenue for compensation increases to full-time, non-administrative staff to be allocated as follows: 75% for classroom teachers, counselors, nurses, and librarians, prioritizing differentiated compensation." That's a little bit more compensation for teachers with greater than five years of experience. And then the 25% goes to all other full-time employees that are not administrative. And so the bill says that this compensation plan can take on many forms, including the use of benefits such as insurance. So, you know, we're looking at several options, and we'll be coming back to the board on the 18th of June. So let's look at the compensation allotment in the lens of Fort Worth ISD. 75% of that 35% allotment would be paid to our full-time teachers, counselors, nurses, and librarians. And as of today, and, you know, we have, you know, a lot of movement in and out of our personnel, but we have approximately 5,818 employees in this category with full-time teachers with greater than five years of teaching experience to receive a little greater allocation. That's called that differentiated piece of the bill. And we have approximately 3,981 full-time teachers. So the other 25% then would go to all other full-time staff, and we have approximately 5,002 employees that fall into that category. So this 25%, this 5,002 employees are not considered in the 75% group, but in the 25% group, and would include employees such as like data analysts, instructional specialists, coaches, bus drivers, maintenance workers, CNS workers, custodians, you know, folks in the administration building, and all other full-time staff that I haven't named, and they would fall in that 25% category. And so we would exclude administrators, and I will define those in the next couple of slides, and that we perceive that the allotment will be paid monthly to qualifying employees.
I did want to jump in on this one, Ms. Starr. We took your feedback and asked that we get some input from our teachers about the allotment to be paid over two type of allotments, maybe one in June and one in December, or over a monthly basis. One of our external partners, our teacher associations, actually beat us to the punch with their own survey that next morning, but we were able to partner with them and utilize some of their results. And the results were definitely the teachers are very concerned about the increase of health insurance that would be coming and feel like having it spread out over a monthly basis would help them budget versus the two separate allotments in December and June. So I just wanted to follow up on that, that you asked us to do.
And so we went to the Education Code to find the definition of classroom teacher, and while I'm not going to read the slide to you, for the most part, you have to work an average of four hours each day in the classroom, you know, in an academic instructional setting or a career and technology instructional setting. And so this definition would exclude employees who do not meet the above definition. Of course, let's go back, these folks would be qualified for the 25%, though, so I just want to make sure that's clear. As far as Fort Worth ISD is concerned, administrative staff are defined as executive directors and above, principals, assistant principals, and deans of instruction. We have approximately 386 employees who fall in this category. They would be excluded from HB3, but if the board approved this compensation package that we'll be discussing in a few minutes, they would receive a 2% midpoint pay increase. I think this is very illustrative of the dilemma that we're in. You know, we have three different entities, LLBB, Mo Casey, and our own preliminary, who you can see the varying increases, estimates, in revenue. And so taking a 30% gain for pay raises ranges anywhere from $14.3 million to $18.4 million, and if our estimates are 16.1, and you take 75% of that for teachers, counselors, nurses, and librarians, we're ranging anywhere from $13.8 million to $10.7, with the districts' average of about 12. And then 25% to all other full-time employees, non-administrative, we range anywhere from $3.6 million to $4.6 million, you know, with our district estimate of about four. So at this point in time, we're still waiting for further clarification, you know, on this bill before we make a recommendation of what the increase in revenue is going to be so that we can correctly pay our employees. I'll turn this over now to David for, please.
Part of the dilemma and part of the challenge in looking at House Bill 3 is exactly what we're looking at here. This House bill creates new allotments, which is basically, as Ms. Shiro talked about earlier, the $6,160 is the basic allotment. That's what each student gets. And based on the instructional setting or the type of student that we're talking about, you get additional funding. Those numbers, those weights are defined, but how they filter into the formula is still being worked through. An example would be the dual-language allotment. Student who is eligible for dual-language allotment, not the immersion program, would get the $6,160, but they would get- get the sixty-one sixty, but they would get an additional three hundred and eight dollars to help fund those programs. So that's kind of a recap on what we're talking about with the weights. There are also increases to existing allotments. Special Ed mainstream is going from one point one to one point one five, so a few hundred extra dollars there. Career and technology, which has historically been a high school-only program, that funding now extends to seventh and eighth grade, which is, you know, obviously a huge benefit. And losses that we've experienced through this legislative session are the repeals in the high school allotment, the gifted and talented allotment, the staff salary allotment, and the cost of education index. Each of those is supposed to have been offset by that increase, so the fifty-one forty basic allotment into the sixty-one sixty new allotment. Probably the most complex change in the state funding formula relates to the state compensatory education. Historically, that's been based on the free and reduce count for the high six months average of the previous school year. Right now, with the new law, so much is undetermined at this point, but in, I guess, the thirty-thousand-foot view, every student in Fort Worth ISD will be GEO-coded. Based on where that student resides, the aggregation of those students within these blocks will determine the funding level. So if you had a tier, a heat map block that was low economically disadvantaged or educationally disadvantaged, as it is now termed, you would not get as much funding. Conversely, if you had a tier five, which was heavy concentrations of economically or educationally disadvantaged students, you would get much more funding. Historically, or under the current funding formula model, we've got about, we would get about eighty-four million dollars for our state compensatory education allotment. I have used an average of about point two five, which would be an average of the point, the tier three funding, and with that, I think it was about a hundred and fourteen million dollars. So depending on how this flushes out, depends, depending on how much guidance they can give and how this thing works out in the end, we, we are likely to get a substantial increase in our state funding for economically disadvantaged state compensatory education. State compensatory education is, these are some of the things that they're looking at in defining the census blocks. They're looking at median household income, average educational attainment. So they're looking at factors of the residents in each of these areas to determine what tier of funding each one of the students that resides in that would, would be entitled to, for the district to receive. Percent of single-parent households, rate of home ownership, other. TEA will take a while to determine this one, I suspect. The Commissioner's shall establish a compensatory education allotment advisory to help. So they've established an educational, an advisory group to help with this issue. Also, as part of the House Bill Three, as you are aware, the funding allotments that I just described have spending mandates. So you've got current law and you've got new law. Special education allotment, you have to spend at least fifty-two percent of that. That changes with that increased allotment. It mandates that you spend more of those dollars in each of those instructional settings. Same thing with career and technology allotment. It was, well, actually, career and technology allotment declined from fifty-eight to fifty-five. Bilingual increase, as did state comp ed. And state comp ed, again, is probably going to be the largest source of funding increase that Fort Worth ISD is going to experience, primarily due to the educationally or economically disadvantaged student population that we have. The illustration at the bottom, if we were to get an additional ten million dollars as a result of the calculation, fifty-five percent, that five point five million dollars would have to be targeted directly for the classroom. The next slide is the student enrollment, and I think to recap, we've talked about this. Due to the dip in the birth rate, we're seeing declines primarily at the elementary level. That has been compounded by the charter movement as well. So, you know, we've gone down eleven hundred and ninety-four students. On the snapshot as of date, it was down seventeen hundred and twenty-four. Right now, our preliminary projections show that we're going to decrease by about nineteen hundred and nine. Because we're budgeting conservatively, we're going to budget on two thousand less students, but that's consistent with the trend that we've seen in enrollment.
For some, for some time now, and even prior to HB Three, administration has been proposing a compensation package effective September first. That would include, you know, the two percent midpoint raise for all employees, increasing the, starting teacher pay to fifty-four thousand, increasing the bilingual stipend to four thousand. We did an area search, you'll see a slide, that, you know, we were low in our stipend. We want to go up to at least four thousand. We want to be competitive, and so we're looking at our pay, teacher pay schedule in steps five through fifteen to maintain and our good teachers and to have them stay with Fort Worth. And we've talked about doing a market increase in pay grades, six hundred, seven hundred, and nine hundred. These are pay grades that have been identified through my department that are undermarket and that they need adjustment for us to be competitive. So that all comes with a dollar price. And you'll see on this slide that when you look at the, this budget package, it equates to about three percent, and you can see the cost, it's right under eighteen million dollars. And so, again, this, this basically is going to be included in the budget that you're going to be seeing in a few minutes. This is before any additions to HB Three. We've talked about the midpoint calculation and that the majority of our employees in Fort Worth ISD would benefit from a midpoint pay increase. And so in this instance, employee A would receive almost two point, point four or five percent in the pay increase when you calculate it on the midpoint, where an employee B who's above the midpoint may receive a little less. At the last budget workshop, I was asked to determine exactly how much it would cost if we would provide a two percent midpoint pay increase or a two percent increase, whichever is greater. And so we did calculate that. That's approximately two hundred and ten thousand dollars to add a guaranteed two percent of our employees that do not receive that full through a midpoint pay increase. So in the example of employee B, if, in fact, the board would approve a two percent, whichever is greater, that employee B would get fifteen hundred dollars in a pay increase versus one thousand three hundred and seventy dollars. And so going back to this slide, you'd add about two hundred and ten thousand dollars. And so the pay package, the package would now be about eighteen point two million dollars on that. Additionally, this slide just reiterates that ninety-five percent of our teachers, librarians, counselors, and nurses would benefit from midpoint, while about sixty-eight percent of all other pay grades would for an overall eighty-two percent. That's why we recommend a midpoint pay increase, and it also helps to assist to alleviate the compression of employees between the minimum and midpoint. And so it will help them move toward the midpoint of pay grades. So it's important that we start doing midpoint increases. This, again, gives us a review of the districts that had an increased bilingual stipend, and so that's why we're going to the four thousand dollar stipend. And so we also, at the last workshop, we were asked to look at a change in the compensation plan, so that if an employee who may be promoted retains his or her bilingual stipend, that that would be, you know, incorporated into the new position. And so at the budget workshop on the eighteenth of June, we'll bring approximate cost of doing that. We see the value in that. Of course, we're looking at expanding World Language Institute to the twelfth grade, I Am Tarot adding the tenth or eleventh, depending on the grade programming. That is going to be less than about a million dollars to add those grades. We're adding a little less than five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the Division of Equity and Excellence. We have a turnaround campus for Poly at a hundred and six thousand. And we're looking at our special ed program and some additional FTEs to serve our students of approximately one point five million dollars. So that's going to be in the budget that you've been seeing.
And looking at the revenue estimates, revenue planning estimates, the local tax revenue, we're still planning on about a seven and a half percent increase in the taxable property values. The initial estimates that we have right now are a little bit higher than that, but we'll get certified values in July, which will be a better measure and a more accurate number, and we'll update the board at that time. For state revenue, House Bill Three increased, which is still obviously under review. That's the fifty-three million that we'll talk about in a minute. The enrollment, we're planning on enrollment of eighty-two thousand six hundred students. The ADA is about seventy-four thousand. We're, we're planning on seventy-four ADA. Right now, our preliminary reports for the current year are about seventy-six, seventy-six thousand eight hundred. So we're planning on dropping the ADA accordingly. Senate Bill eighteen eighty-two partnership revenue, again, it's a new legislative session. What we've estimated this number on is our existing legislative session, and so we'll just have to see on that. There's really hadn't been a lot of information forthcoming on what's going to come with the Senate Bill eighteen eighty-two partnership money. Our federal revenue is pretty consistent, max shards. We don't anticipate a whole lot of change with that. An unrestricted indirect cost rate, still probably pretty consistent with what we have seen in the prior years. The next slide is kind of the slide that we've looked at over the course of our budget workshops and budget updates. Right now, we're looking at seven hundred and ninety-two million dollars in revenue. Payroll costs remain at the six hundred and six, projected six hundred and sixty-seven. You'll note that we have pending, placed in the sixty-one hundred for the House Bill Three increase that Ms. Shiro spoke about earlier. One other thing that I wanted to note on here is the purchase order rollovers were historically six million, or they were six million. As we get closer to the end of the year, we have information, more accurate information, and we have the actual information. So that increased about one point eight million dollars from our original estimate. We still have the HB Three additional expenditure requirements. As we get better information, it is likely that we will have to spend some additional funds. So we're providing for that based on an estimate right now, knowing that that will change, and as we get better information, we can update the board accordingly. Under this scenario, we look at a deficit budget without the House bill additional compensation that we will calculate later of about twenty-eight million dollars. Our beginning unaudited fund balance is projected to be right under two hundred million. So if we were to end with this budget as presented, we would expect the budget, the fund balance to go down a hundred and seventy-one million. That's the, the projected revenue as we have it now, and again, that's the House Bill Three increase. The next slide is that same information, but a different view. As the board is probably aware, the Board of Trustees is required to adopt a budget at the functional level. What we've done here is we've taken those dollars and we've put them into the functional categories that they will be spent from. Case in point, function eleven is instruction, that is the classroom. That's the bulk of where the, of the district's money typically resides. And so as we go down through, you can see how we combine those, the TRE and the general fund, to arrive at the eight hundred and twenty-one million dollars that we reported by object in the previous slide. Another thing that we've done on this slide is we've separated the TRE fund from the general fund to give the Board of Trustees a depiction of what we expect each of the respective funds to do. Right now, based on our estimate, estimated revenue, we've got about twenty-four million dollars in TRE funds, seven hundred and sixty-eight million in operational funds, and seven hundred and ninety-two million in the, in the combination of those funds. The TRE funds are from the two pennies that were approved in the November two thousand seventeen election, and we also included the state, additional state aid that was a result of that additional two pennies. Right now, we're budgeting twenty-nine million one ninety-eight six oh three. Originally, we budgeted twenty-four million nineteen thousand. The difference between those two are projects that are currently in process, and those are being added to this budget by way of purchase order rollovers. So we've got about five point eight million dollars in Fund One Ninety-Eight in projects currently happening that we'll transfer and provide for in the eight, in the nineteen-twenty budget. The other budget, the general fund budget, is currently at about seven hundred and ninety-one. So the combination of the two budgets is eight twenty-one, one oh three, seven seven six. And again, I've separated the fund balances in each of these respective funds because that's how we provide for it in accounting. Fund balance from the TRE is the unspent money from seventeen, eighteen, and eighteen, nineteen, what we're projecting as of this point in time. So even after we spent that baseline of twenty-four million in the TRE fund and add to that the purchase order rollovers, we still have money in that TRE fund. The operational fund is going to, projected to have a hundred and fifty million, and the total funds combined are a hundred and seventy-two million. Budget recommendations, we're going to continue with the June twenty-fifth adoption date. We are going to come back to the Board of Trustees likely in July, when we have better information that we can base our House Bill Three additional allocation of salaries on. The June twenty-fifth budget would include the seventeen nine eighty-eight, seven fifty in compensation. And again, we'll come back to you probably in July and have clarification on the House Bill Three revenue that will give us the basis to calculate the accurate number that we want to include in the budget for the nineteen-twenty school year. Debt service fund, I think y'all have seen this right now. We have an increase in fund balance, but we also know that we have five hundred and eighty-seven million dollars of the two thousand seventeen bonds that have not been issued. We're going to keep that, we plan on keeping that tax rate the same because we know that our amortization will require higher taxes at some point in the future. So that was the plan on the debt service fund. And this is the child nutrition fund. And again, this is part of the contract with SEDEXO. The only difference that we see on this is because SEDEXO is still, we're still keeping this in an enterprise fund, we've got to provide for depreciation. And so that's the negative amount that you see at the bottom. The two point one million excess of expenses is attributable to the depreciation. Right now, we're projecting fund balance to end for eighteen nineteen at about two point three million, which would give us fund balance at the end of this cycle under the SEDEXO contract of about two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. Next steps would be the budget workshop a week from tonight, and then budget adoption will be on June twenty-fifth. Can I answer any questions?
Any questions from the board? Trustee Lu Evans?
Thank you, President Ramos. So as we work on this budget, I have a couple of questions for next year. Dr. Scrivener mentioned last time about creating tiers of schools from elementary to middle school to a high school. Is it possible to add Mariachi to Rosemont and maybe?
McLean?
McLean, McLean-Meadow. That way, the Rosemont can fit into, into South Hills, and then McLean-Meadow into Pasco. And then at the same time, you know, Poly, we also have Mariachi at Poly, but we don't have Mariachi at the middle school level.
Karen?
So Dr. Scrivener, actually, we discussed that earlier today, and we are going through a student survey with our after-school athletic sports, and we would like to include some of our fine arts as well, even though a lot of that program is done throughout the day, just as some of our athletics. We want to make sure we're giving a choice for our students to give us their voice and interest. We like to gauge the interest from both of our males and females from each of those groups. So we are planning on, in the early fall, to get a better participation rate than we did late spring with the testing going on and some other issues. We didn't feel like we had a really great participation, participation rate with our last survey. And then when we come back and we do budget amendments in the fall, once HB Three is settled, then whatever our survey results come up with, we would bring that back to the board for consideration. We really want to get student interest as well before we make decisions.
One more question. I know in tabs we have, do we have gym tabs?
Our tabs, there is a health requirement, a PE requirement, and I can look into how we, we, you know, we stay in compliance with that.
And we offer music classes to the specific school?
So I don't want to answer specifically for tabs because I'm not sure on the answer. I want to make sure I give you the correct answer. So I'm happy to research that this evening, and tomorrow morning, you'll have an answer on both of those.
Thank you.
Trustee Evans?
Thank you. Thank y'all for your report. My question is about the educationally disadvantaged tiers on page, page twelve and thirteen. So do we know exactly how our GEO allotment map looks yet?
We don't.
We don't?
So much of that is yet to be defined at this point.
And then how often is the map going to change? Because since that is part of our new allotment.
They have not finished that whole process. The TEA is still working through, though, so.
Because the next page references that they'll Because the next page references that they'll be assigned a census group, but I don't know if that'll just be based on the...
Yeah, I think that what the Commissioner's trying to get out here in the legislation is getting at generational poverty. So, we're really looking at the differentiation between the students who are pockets of poverty in one part of town versus an entire community that is, generation after generation, been struggling socio-economically, and I think that's where the waiting is trying to address through the CompEd Fund there.
Okay. So, we don't necessarily expect those numbers, those tiers, to fluctuate much?
I think once they define it, they're likely to, you know, at census time, I expect that they would define it at census time, but at this point, they'll have to define those. What we'll have to do is geocode the students into those, and that'll be static for a period of time.
Okay.
Just exactly how that happens is to be determined at this point.
Okay. And then, one other question on page 10, I see, you know, you break it down to 30% based on the different estimates of the projected revenue, and our numbers, our increases roughly 18.1 million, is that what you were saying?
Right.
And so, if it's KC's evaluation or even our preliminary evaluation, we're fine there, but what if it's the ledger's evaluation comes in? Or do we, at that point, have to, I know 300,000 is just pennies in this sense, but then come up to that 18.4 million in this 3% package, basically?
I think there is some verbiage in the bill that's still yet to be defined that says that once a district identifies what the gain is, that there's generally not a settle-up.
Okay.
You know, there's not a settle-up on that, and so that's why we want to wait to the extent that we can, because we certainly don't want to underestimate what our allocation will be. And so, I think they recognize that there are so many unknown numbers that we're going to have to come to a conclusion that, you know, our gain is X. We're going to have to take that percentage and go forward with it.
Okay. Thank you.
Trustee Andar?
On page six, it mentions that in House Bill III, that 30% of the gain from that House bill needs to go to increased teacher salaries or to the full-time non-administrative salaries. What happens, can you clarify for me, what happens to the other 70%?
The 70% of the gain?
Mm-hmm.
Basically, you utilize that just for general operating expenses. It goes into the general fund. You know, the thing is, is where there's going to be a decrease in tax collections, and so we're going to have to offset some of that gain from state revenue. And so, the thing is, is they've only mandated the 30% go to those salaries, but the 30, the 70% is going to have to go and offset what we're not getting from local tax collections because it's the intent of this bill that the state does pay more and alleviates some of the burden from the taxpayer, but so that's going to have to go to offset our losses in local revenue.
Okay. But if it's not 70% the value of it, can we put 35% toward teacher pay raises or toward non-administrative staff? I mean, is that up to us? Is that, do we have the authority to be able to decide how that money is used, or do we have to only use 30%?
No. I would think that it would be a discretionary and a part of the board. If they wanted to use more than that 30%, they could do that.
Okay. And my second question is, where we're prioritizing differentiated compensation for classroom teachers with greater than five years of experience, do, does Fort Worth ISD determine the formula of how that's done? Is there anything in the bill? How are we going to be differentiating that? Do we know?
The bill gives flexibility to school districts statewide. It is not specified. We, as a leadership team, have been looking at how we, that differentiated pay would look. We look at the teacher salary schedule and exactly how those numbers can be allocated. We will bring to you some examples on the 18th of June at the workshop. So, it kind of gives you a flavor of how we're calculating this and how we think it's in the best interest of our employees to do so.
Okay. Thank you.
Trustee Quentin Phillips?
Yes, I was hoping to get another quick clarification on the 2% midpoint versus the 2% overall.
Yes, sir.
And so, I believe I heard that to the tune of $210,000 that we would be able to do whichever was greater, and was that for the employees that had already crossed the threshold of the midpoint?
Yes, sir. The thing is, is that that would compensate all of the employees above the midpoint and would provide them a full 2% of their salary, and that would cost $210,000.
Okay. And then, with the next budget workshop, we have those examples of actual paychecks. Remember, kind of asked about that, like maybe by category, about what would the actual raise look like on the actual take-home basis for the employees that we're talking about?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Trustee Ashley Pass?
Thank you, President Ramos. Okay. So, I really appreciate the level of detail that we're receiving in these reports, especially with the complexity that House Bill III has added, and I also appreciate the amount of time and attention that we're paying to our teacher salaries. I think that this is probably the most time that we've spent on this since I've been on the board, which is a great thing. This is just a request for future. I personally would like to see how this budget is going to help us achieve our goals for student achievement in Fort Worth ISD. And this is not a criticism, that's just maybe a blind spot, that we are spending so much time on those other things that, over the last couple of budget workshops that we have had, we haven't really had much conversation about student outcomes. So, I would, hopefully, we can spend some time on that with our next workshop.
Okay.
So, that's all.
We'd be happy to.
Okay. Looks like we have no more questions from the board. Thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Dr. Scrivener, would you like to say a few words before this next presentation?
Yes, thank you very much, President Ramos. So, next week, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, we will be conducting our principal professional learning, much like a presentation that we gave a few weeks back on Flex Days. We wanted to share with the board what our summer professional learning plan is for principals. We know that teacher quality is the most impactful criteria, the most impactful thing with regard to student achievement, but second only to teacher quality is leadership as an important lever for student achievement. So, tonight, Ms. Breed, Mr. Carroll, and Doctors Washington and Peña will take us through our principal professional learning presentation in preparation for next week's learning opportunity.
Thank you, Dr. Scrivener, President Ramos, members of the Board of Trustees. We appreciate this opportunity to bring this information to you this evening and answer whatever questions you may have about our efforts at principal professional learning. As you know, what we focus on are student outcomes. We want positive outcomes for all of our students, and as we've discussed, particularly in the area of primary literacy, changing teacher practice and engaging teachers in changing their practice to be more effective with students is central to improving outcomes. But as Dr. Scrivener just stated, the second correlate to that is principal learning and engaging principals so that they can be better monitors, better coaches, and better supporters at the campus level for students and for teachers both. And so, what we're doing at the PPLE is, and that's Principal Professional Learning Event, PPLE, is we are living up to our great leaders, great schools, great results for all students motto that we've put in place with Fort Worth ISD. And as we work toward fulfilling that goal, many of the sessions, indeed, all the sessions at PPLE will hit one of the goals, early literacy, middle-years math, college and career readiness that you as a board have set and that we continue to use as targets as we're making our way forward to improve student achievement. One of the other areas that we will be focusing on as well within sessions is our work toward racial equity, and I'm going to pass along the clicker to Ms. Breed and let her visit with you for a couple of slides about that component of the principal professional learning.
Because we know we want racially conscious, culturally responsive, and sensitive individuals at all levels of the organization, we thought it was important to work with our executive directors, who are the direct supervisors of our principals, and embed some of our equity, racial equity tools into their presentations. So, some of these tools that you have, many of you may be familiar with, but we're going to return and just revisit the compass, the four agreements that we ask all the participants to remain and commit to, and then the six conditions that help us engage in a racial equity conversation, sustain it, and then deepen the conversation. Another tool that I use regularly, not just when I'm having a conversation about race, is mindful inquiry. But we're going to revisit this with our executive directors tomorrow and remind them about how to have healthy communications and deepen the conversation. And then, you see the art of mindful inquiry, which is there, which gives you the question stems that you can use when you want to deepen the conversation, gather additional information, and model being a good listener. We thought this was important for our executive directors because they're going to be listening and working with principals and engaging in conversations.
Good evening, President Ramos and board members. As Mr. Carroll stated earlier, some of the professional learning that our principals experience occur in our end-of-the-year Principal Professional Learning Event. Next week, we will host our third annual Principals Learning Event. It will be held at the Southwestern Baptist Theological Seminary, June 17 through the 19. The Principals event is specifically developed with campus leadership in mind. Therefore, our principals and assistant principals are in attendance. The theme this year, You Belong Here: Leadership with a Purpose, is our focus. Over 176 sessions are offered over the two days, and learning sessions will incorporate choice, adult engagement, and a variety of learning formats. As you can see, we survey our principals in order to understand how we want to design and adjust to their needs. Featured here are a few of the notes of feedback that we received from the 2018 Principals Learning Event. Also, to ensure engagement, we also want to make sure that we have quality, a quality focus on drivers such as choice in learning, active participation, time to collaborate with peers, time to focus on one's own instructional leadership, and then time to process and reflect. All of these drivers are grounded in adult learning theories and professional learning
President Ramos, Dr. Scrivener, board. As we brought to you at the last board meeting, the professional learning work supporting teacher growth through TTEST, which is the Texas Teacher Evaluation and Support System, today we bring you the Principal Professional Learning that supports principal growth through TPAS, which is the Texas Principal Evaluation Support System. All our professional learning is aligned through a growth mindset. Both TTEST and TPAS rubrics are predicated on teacher and principal collaboration and working towards professional growth. As part of the TPAS, principals work with their executive directors on a yearly basis to develop aligned professional and student achievement academic goals each school year. The Principal Professional Learning Event provides the principals the first opportunity as they set their goals for the school year toward planning and aligning their work to achieve these goals. The professional learning opportunities for growth continue throughout the school year. On this next slide, you can see we're working collaboratively across the district to build robust professional learning offerings. Principal Professional Learning features seven strands, as shown on this slide. Let me provide you with a more in-depth view of these strands. As you can see from the table, the main focus is curriculum and instruction and school leadership to your left. These are the area of concentration as they are top priority for the district. To the left of the table, you can see how we've aligned the strands to the TPAS standards, which were utilized to align and map out these sessions to make sure that we were aligned. As you can see, our first standard with the TPAS is instructional leadership, human capital, executive leadership, school culture, and strategic operations. So, let me take you through a look at the school leadership strand. As Sheryl Sandberg states, "The ability to learn is the most important quality a leader can have." Therefore, to support our principals and their learning, we are providing a broad range of learning experiences in the school leadership strand this year. Those experiences include topics such as establishing strong, measurable academic goals, increasing student and teacher performance, articulating a very clear attendance vision and planning, and providing clear expectations and budgeting tools to support our principals with their work, just to name a few of the sessions under the school leadership strand. Now, Mr. Carroll will provide you with an in-depth look at the curriculum and instruction strand in more detail.
Thank you, Dr. Peña. So, we had a couple of things come together kind of fortuitously in the fall semester of 2018 that I'd like to walk through with you on this particular slide. Of course, from my perspective, it's the most important slide in the deck, and so I'm going to go through it in some relative detail with you because I think it's important to understand what series of events happened during 2018-19 that led us to where we are now. Ms. Shiro brought in a group to the district, ERS. I think you all had a report for them not too long ago, and they did a lot of work in the area of curriculum and assessments and looked through a lot of our documentation during the time that we were working through and producing some new formatted curriculum pieces in literacy, math, science, social studies, and also working through in fine arts and CTE. We were producing documentation everywhere. And ERS came in, and it's their job. They ask hard questions about how these things align and what they're supposed to look like. And during that time, we were also gathering some input from building principals via the leadership groups that both Dr. Washington and Dr. Peña run. And what we were finding through a lot of formative, anecdotal, but really good feedback, the best kind of feedback, which is face-to-face across the table, talking to each other, is that the curriculum documents that we were producing during the fall of 18 overshot the mark, and what we needed to do was go back in and reformulate some of what we were trying to achieve in curriculum and put together some documents that were oriented a little differently. And this was made particularly clear to us at a campus visit at Oakhurst Elementary, where we had a great conversation with campus teachers and principals and assistant principals about the difficulty with implementation. So, what we did is come back and effect the third button on this slide, which is a curriculum redesign, and the result of that is some of what you see on the slide in front of you. The squares with the green line across the top are a scope and sequence document that we worked in concert with our friends at Teach and Trust and in the Leadership Division to put together that was much clearer and more direct and more succinct and usable for campus personnel in order to engage in effective assessment and planning. And the document that has the blue and red blocks on it is a unit guide that is formatted very differently than the curriculum that we produced during the fall. And what we did is come back in in January, February, and produce the fifth and sixth six weeks, particularly in tested areas, English I, English II, and a couple of other ones that fell into these categories so that they could be turned around and used immediately at our campuses, and they were vetted through those same principal groups and in some other academic convenings that we used to make sure that what we were putting out was exactly what people were asking for at the campus level that would be clearer and more usable in their own planning and in PLCs. This will continue in all subjects and in all grade levels until we have the document through these redesigns that we need that formats the same all the way across our curriculum structure and is usable, particularly like by an elementary teacher who has five or six different preps every day, who needs to have the same format to look at to make sure that they're hitting everything that they need to hit. And so, it has been a huge process for us to move forward with that, but it's been gratifying the degree to which we have worked with. we have worked with campus personnel and leadership to design documents that meet the needs that we have across the district. One of the things that came out of that is a desire to connect the literacy conference, which is the last button on this slide, to the PPLE. We haven't really done that before, but it was a concerted effort by Dr. Pena and Dr. Washington to make sure that their principals were involved in the literacy conference as well as in PPLE, model attendance with teachers, be there for the learning so that when they got back to campuses, they could be aligned in their expectations and their processes in their classrooms. And so it has been a relatively demanding spring semester getting to this point, but certainly well worth the time because when that feedback comes back and it's not exactly what you expect, then jumping in and getting the work done immediately is an incumbent on an organization that aspires to agility. And that is where we are. So what we would like to do is invite you, if you have the time and inclination on the 17th or 18th or at the literacy conference on the 19th, you're always more than welcome at the Southwestern Baptist Theological Seminary to come join a session. There are a number of new curriculum documents that we'll be working through with our principals and then ultimately with teachers. There is also, as the board approved a couple of board meetings ago, significant new adoption, K through eight literacy, that there'll be a lot of that work that is going on as well. And so there's a lot new. It's a good time for a reboot, and we have hit that with the PPLE and literacy conference. We're very excited about it, and we hope to see you there. So if you have any questions for any of the four of us, I'm sure we would be glad to answer.
Trustee Paz.
Thank you, President Ramos. So I have, in District Nine, I've got Tabs, Young Women's, Trimble Tech, Daggett-Montessori, and Riverside Applied Learning. I think that's all of the specialized schools.
That's all.
So two of those, Riverside Applied and Daggett-Montessori are both hiring new principals this year, from my understanding. And so I'm making an assumption that there is not a pool of Montessori-trained and applied learning-trained principals that are out there floating in the DFW area in June and July. I don't know how long it's going to take to make those hires. But assuming that that's the case, what kind of specialized professional development will whoever fills those roles be given, or will they even be required any kind of specialized professional development to ensure that, because the curriculum is different for both of those programs, the delivery of instruction is different for both of those programs, so the evaluation process, which is their most important job as a principal, should look different as well. So how will that be reconciled for those, for our specialized schools? And also, the ones that have administrators that are continuing, are they required to take the same professional development, or do they receive specialized opportunities as well?
David is in, David Sines is the program director over AIL at the moment. And what he is doing as we speak is designing pathways for both Montessori and applied learning because as you're over, as a board member, several campuses have fallen into that category. You know how easy it is to affect program drift. And so he's quite aware of it. I'd be happy to have him shoot you an email and let you know what he's putting in place for them, Ms. Paz, because he's right in the middle of making contacts that he needs now in order to establish something consistent that we can do to support those campuses.
And then trustee Paz, just to, as far as the principal selection process, it's a continuation of what began last year, is a very inclusive process. And so the executive directors are working directly with the campus committees. And so I know especially for Daggett, it's been a top priority, and we've got something that's in the works, and they had a committee meeting on Monday.
So is that like the side-based committee?
It's inclusive of teachers, community members. It has even teacher assistants from the campus. So it's an inclusive committee that's very representative of the side-based decision team.
Okay, so it, but it's different than the side-based team?
In some cases, it is. In some cases, it's similar personnel.
Let's talk offline about that.
Okay.
Trustee Norman Robbins.
Thank you, President Ramos. Appreciate you putting the three goals for the board and the superintendent in this presentation. I wonder, have we ever seen the budget broken down by our three goals? Would that be an onerous task?
During the budget process, you can hear me, when we went into our budget planning tool, we had to identify the goals in which we were earmarking funds for. And on the 16th, I will bring you that report.
Okay, thank you. That's wonderful.
Each department, Mr. Robbins, had to select a goal that their budget package aligned to and at each item, line item, actually. So we had to be very thoughtful. We had great discussions in leadership team about which goal that would fit under.
Wonderful, wonderful. Thank you.
Trustee Endor.
Thank you, President Ramos. Back to the ELA curriculum
Yes.
that you guys have been working on. Is that now vertically aligned, K through 12? Have you finished that? I think I missed some pieces in that, or is it just English I and English II at this point?
No, no, no. It's not just English I and English II, but it's not vertically aligned yet. We're in the process of revision now because of where we started, Ms. Endor. We started with the fifth and sixth six weeks because of where we were in the year when we got the feedback.
Okay.
And I had no desire to continue going down that road. And so we went ahead and jumped in and changed for those two grading periods. And now we're getting back to the first six weeks where we can start the vertical alignment pieces and do every grade level, which is where we are now.
So are they, or will they be aligned with the new ELAR teaks
Yes.
for 2019?
Yes, yes. That was also criteria in our adoption process.
Okay, it looks like that's all the questions or comments from the board. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
On to public comment. Let me remind you that because of the restrictions by the Texas Open Meetings Act, board members may not engage in a verbal exchange about a subject that has not been posted. We will listen and take notes, but the board is prohibited from responding to any inquiries made during a board meeting on any topic not posted on the agenda. However, the board may reply with a statement of specific factual information given in response to the inquiry, recitation of existing policy in response to the inquiry, or direct a person to visit with staff about the issue. While the board listens to concerns of a general nature and issues of common and individual concern, the board will not hear complaints about specific individual employees or public officers during the public session. Speakers shall refrain from mentioning names of individual employees or public officers during their comments. Any employee, parent, or other member of the public is asked to comply with the appropriate grievance policy to have a complaint heard pursuant to the applicable board policy. In accordance with Board Policy BED Local, speakers shall have a three-minute time limit, and I ask that you please observe this rule. Furthermore, a speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another speaker. Delegations of five or more persons shall appoint one person to present their views before the board with a time not to exceed five minutes. We have, up speaking first is Sharon Anderson. Sharon Anderson will be followed by Scott Blanco Davis.
Good evening. I'm Sharon Anderson, and I have spent 25 years with Fort Worth, mostly at Southwest High School. I came to ask, is there anything that can be done about doing away with cell phones in the classroom during instructional time? I'm not against kids who have them on them, you know, in their purse or backpack. I have kids that tell me they're addicted. I tell them, I'm staying. I lost my cellphone at Walmart and I thought I was going to lose my mind, but I got it. So I understand them. But we need to just get them out of the classroom just for instructional time. So it's impeding the learning ability. The kids are not listening. They're, you know, texting their friends or whatever. And I can understand. I tell my kids, if you, mom, dad has an emergency, just go ahead and step outside. I was on the portable side. I tell them, just step outside and call them because I know I've had emergencies too. So I was just wondering if anything can be done about that. And the second point, I'm kind of debating if I wanted to ask you this, but is there something that can be done about the three-day policy? I have kids, and we all have, and when I say eyes, I'm just not talking about me. There are all of us having problems with kids being in the classroom, knowing what the assignment is, knowing when it's due. And when it comes due, they say, oh, no, I don't have it. I'll take my three days. I personally believe that that's not teaching them responsibility. Now, I'm for letting them make up time later on that I designate, and they can make up the work, but is there anything that can be done about that? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Scott Blanco Davis. Scott will be followed by Jason Amen.
Good afternoon. I was recently asked why an estimated 2,000 of our Fort Worth ISD family are fleeing the charter schools. This made me realize Fort Worth ISD really doesn't understand their customer, so I came to give some insight. Firstly, it's not low teacher performance from undertrained teachers whose low educational product is driving students out. In truth, the heartfelt connections and hard work of the teachers keep more from stampeding out. Our students and their parents see what actions occur in their school. To see the broken promises of the district shows them a lack of caring. For example, my school, after a whole educational year, does not have one working science lab, and the chemical storage closet actually has a crack at the top that will vent gas into an adjacent classroom. Our students see this lack of caring, and because they do care about their education, they look for an alternative. Like any good consumer, they take their money where they get the best value. Our students know when they are disrespected and devalued. It is highly unprofessional that either by design or coincidence, an eighth-grade ELL student could get 18 federal, state, and district assessments in 15 days. If you were that student and had a chance to go to a fully-equipped new school that got out at 1 o'clock and focused on teaching, not testing, wouldn't you? Sadly, I must once again state that Fort Worth ISD is the only place I know where you're penalized for meeting a goal. The district's reading goal is all students reading on grade level by 2025. So why are advanced sixth and seventh graders on college reading levels penalized with the loss of valuable science and social studies time to do additional Achieve 3,000 for another three years? They have met your expectations and exceeded them. My seventh-grade accelerated students are asked to learn 68 weeks of material in 34 weeks, then lose another four weeks of hands-on science to do a program they don't need and find boring. I thought individualized instruction was the goal. So our students are not leaving because of loving, caring teachers. It may have something to do with the lack of support, disrespect of their time, broken promises, and lack of professionalism of a district that overtests and mandates them to mediocrity when they seek greatness. In closing, maybe Fort Worth ISD should step up and become competitive before charter schools like IDEA find incentives to steal your highly-trained professional teachers and teach Fort Worth ISD out of business with a better educational product. Since Mr. Bond hasn't said anything to me, this was actually something I was questioned on. This is an interim assessment for seventh-grade pre-AP, seventh-grade AP accelerated, grade A regular, grade A pre-AP. They should not be at the same spot in the curriculum. Thank you, Mr. Bond.
Thank you. Last and final speaker for the evening will be Jason Amen.
Thank you, Mr. President, honorable board, and Dr. Scribner. I'm here tonight to talk to you about kids with disabilities. And this is important because of a very uncomfortable truth, which is that our society is designed and our world was constructed in such a way that people like us can go about our business and not have to see them. Once you awaken to this truth, you'll see it everywhere. I see it when kids with disabilities are segregated onto campuses, into classrooms, onto buses. It's the reason why the windows on the short buses were tinted. I see it in the grand but inaccessible stairs to Trimble Tech that forced the kids with disabilities to enter where they are less visible. I see it when I watch the State of the District video, and I could reasonably conclude that there are no kids with disabilities here. In an administration focused on data, I see it when I open a kid's file in high school, and there's no meaningful data there. I trust that you are all good enough leaders to know that you need to check your blind spots. Once you get to the point where you can really see them, I need you to have a vision for them. I've lamented before about your mission statement and your use of the phrase "all students" when you can't possibly mean it. This is one other way that children with disabilities are overlooked. I need very much for you to articulate a vision for children with disabilities that does not include the words "college, career, or community" leadership, because there are children under your care for whom those things are not within the realm of possibilities. Having grown weary of waiting, I'm just going to give you a vision. My vision for students with disabilities is that they participate in society to the maximum extent that they are able. You may have a different vision, and that's fine, but you need to tell us what it is so that we can have the discussion. Is the way you're educating them preparing them for what you're planning on? You talk about what you're preparing them for, but I'm not sure that you know where they go when they leave here. I'm working with a young man who attends one of the Better Day Habilitation facilities, and it's still awful. There is a place for him in society. He has value to add. This has to start with you, though, and here's the second uncomfortable truth. A segregated education prepared him for an institutionalized adulthood. I don't believe for an instant that this is the model that you want, but this is what you've got. You have great people working in a flawed system, and we can all do better. The solution is less segregation, more inclusion, and I'll be back another day to tell you about how that paradigm shift transformed my own child's life. Thank you all so much. Good evening.
Thank you all for sharing your thoughts this evening with us. At this time, we will now recess and reconvene in the board conference room. Okay. In accordance with the Open Meetings Law, the board opened a meeting at 5:30 PM in the boardroom with a quorum present. Recessed, open session in the boardroom. It is now reconvened at 7:08 PM, an open session in the board conference room with a quorum present. As board president, I am making the following statement in accordance with Board Policy BBFA Local. This is a reminder to all board members of the legal conflict of interest requirements and disclosure requirements you may have for matters under consideration on the agenda for this meeting. If required by law, board members shall recuse themselves from all discussion and shall abstain from voting on any matter pertaining to such a disclosure. Are there any questions concerning agenda items, consent agenda items? Mr. Robbins?
Thank you, President Ramos. I'd like to ask Mr. Cabasos on item 7B1, which is on page 26. Why is the cybersecurity system being purchased by our education foundation?
It's not being purchased by the education foundation.
The invoice or whatever it is has them listed as...
The quote.
Yeah.
They must have shipped that to a wrong address, sir.
Okay.
It's not being purchased
Okay.
by the education foundation.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions on consent agenda? Looks like we are good. Okay, then this concludes our discussion of agenda items. We will now recess for executive session in the board conference room. For executive session is authorized by Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, under sections 551.071, .072, .074, and .076. 551.071, .072, .074, and .076. in the boardroom with a quorum present, recessed and reconvened, open session in the board conference room, adjourned regular session, convened executive session, then adjourned executive session, and now reconvened open session at 8:01 PM in the boardroom with a quorum present. We will move on to item number 11 in accepting consent agenda. Do I have a motion? I've got a motion by trustee Jackson, a second by trustee Levanos. Any discussion on consent agenda? No discussion, please move to vote. Motion passes eight, four, and zero against. No items were removed for number 12A and 12B. There is no personnel, so we will proceed to action agenda items. With no action required on those, with no action required on items A, B, and C, we will continue to item D. Item D is approved board resolution and contract of sale to purchase Lot 1, Block 2, Walter Willie subdivision, City of Fort Worth, Tarrant County, Texas, known as 1800 Dillard Street, or by eminent domain if final offer is declined. Do I have a motion? I have a motion by trustee Robbins and a second by trustee Jackson. Any discussion? Looks like no discussion. Please move to vote. Motion passes eight, four, and zero against. Moving on to 14 comments by board members or superintendent on current district activities and/or announcements. Are there any comments from board members or the superintendent on this item? Trustee CJ Evans.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that yesterday I had the opportunity to go to Western Hills Elementary and visit with the principal, Ms. Montes, and some of her staff. It was so nice to be on campus and observe summer school and see and hear about the great things happening at Western Hills Elementary.
Awesome. Thank you for sharing that. Looks like no other comments from board members. I do have one brief one. I was able to, in my six years of being here as a trustee, I had never attended the Hiring Fair hosted at the Will Rogers. That is a phenomenal event. So if any of you ever get a chance to go check that out, we, I think, I believe they said they had 14,000 jobs to give. And so line of students was out in the foyer, and it's like they've thought of everything. So they had a whole clothing closet with brand-new clothing, coats and ties and belts, and people were getting their hair done, so many amazing community partners. I regret that I had not been before, but I promised them that I would be back. So I told them that I would hype it up and let everybody know of all the great work that they're doing. So with that, looks like we are done, so our meeting is adjourned.